Today we have Reverend Diane Scribner of Unity of Benita Springs. Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a joy to be here. This is my second time. Thank you so much for inviting me. And this is really an awesome time. Because we have the National Boating Week and National Police Week are being celebrated. And so I'm so grateful to be here for the invocation today. If you feel comfortable doing so, gently close your eyes as we turn inward to the God of your being. We thank you, sweet spirit, for gathering this group together today that we might be mindful as a small-town community that has so much charm. We know we have a big, bright future and tending to what is being discussed today and making good decisions. We ask that you be present to us in every thought that we hold, every word that we speak, and every action that we as a community take this day proclaimed. And we so thank you for being the one presence in all of our lives. And so it is. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
And Councilmember Bogas announced her absence at today's meeting, at the meeting on May 7th.
Okay. We need a motion to accept Chris on Zoom.
Motion to accept.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
I guess.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
All right. The public comment on agenda items. Any public comment this morning on agenda items? All right. Seeing none, we will go to our presentations and proclamations. This morning, we have a proclamation designating the week of May 17th to the 23rd, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week in the city of Benita Springs. And we have representatives from the U.S. Coast Guard, Wiggins Pass Flotilla 96 here with us this morning. If you want to join me up front. City of Benita Springs proclamation. Whereas Benita Springs is blessed with an abundance of fresh water and coastal resources, coupled with beautiful weather year-round, offering residents and visitors from around the world exceptional opportunities for water-related recreation. And whereas in our community, boating is more than just a pastime, it embodies a way of life that is deeply woven into our identity, tourism, and economic vitality. With over 50,000 registered boats in Lee County alone and more than 1 million vessels across the state, Florida rightfully holds the title as the boating capital of the world. And whereas boating safety is a critical concern, with an average of 700 lives lost annually in boating accidents across the United States, many of which stem from human errors that could be prevented through adherence to fundamental safety practices that include carrying emergency communication equipment, wearing life jackets, and maintaining sobriety while on the water. And whereas National Safe Boating Week serves as an opportunity for every boater, from novices to seasoned mariners, to reaffirm their commitment to safe practices, including responsible navigation, obtaining vessel safety checks, participating in boater education courses, and complying with all federal, state, and local boating laws. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mike Gibson, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th to the 23rd, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week in the city of Benita Springs, and express appreciation for the dedicated efforts of the following agencies in promoting boating safety and reducing accidents in the U.S. Coast Guard, the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, Wiggins Pass Flotilla 96, the Lee County Sheriff's Office Marine Unit, and the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, and all other organizations committed to boating safety awareness. Done and ordered this 21st day of May, 2025. Thank you, Mayor. Do you want to say anything?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Gibson. And I'd like to thank all of the council members for this recognition. It was very well said, all of the areas we cover. And just briefly, I want to say that the Coast Guard Auxiliary is the all-volunteer component of Coast Guard. And our focus is on boating safety with the recreational boating public. And as cited in this proclamation, we've spent, I think, over 10,000 hours in the last year, in 2024, dedicating ourselves to doing things like vessel checks, public education, and outreach with all of the different businesses that are involved in the marine community here in Benita Springs. And as you said, we are definitely blessed with a beautiful boating environment. And our job is to make sure people enjoy it. And that's our dedication. And we really appreciate this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have another proclamation that Deputy Mayor Purdon will read.
Can I have all the guys in the back come up front, please? Great to see you guys. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Good to see you guys. Come on in. Good morning. Good to see you. Okay. Whereas the city of Benita Springs proudly joins communities across the United States in commemorating National Police Week honoring the courage, integrity, and selfless dedication of law enforcement professionals who safeguard our communities and uphold the values we cherish as Americans. Whereas Benita Springs Community Police Unit serves a crucial role in strengthening the fabric of our city, protecting our neighborhoods, fostering trust, upholding justice, preserving peace, and responding to emergencies with swift action and compassion and expertise. Whereas the men and women of Benita Springs Community Police Unit exemplify the highest ideals of service, valor, professionalism, thereby earning our profound respect, gratitude, and admiration. And whereas National Police Week provides the citizens of Benita Springs with an opportunity to honor our law enforcement professionals and express our heartfelt appreciation for their unwavering courage and commitment to protecting our community. Now therefore, I, Deputy Mayor Jesse Purdon, on behalf of our great Mayor Mike Gibson and city council, do hereby proclaim May 15th through May 22nd, 2025, as National Police Week in the city of Benita Springs. And extend our deepest gratitude to past and present members of Benita Springs Community Policing Unit and the entire Lee County Sheriff's Office, whose dedication and exceptional service have made the city of Benita Springs one of the safest cities in America, and as I call it, the greatest city in America. Done and ordered this day, 21st day of May, 2025. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
All right. Laura, you have a comment?
I'm just curious. We're doing the exterior of the Lyles Hotel. Is there any interior that needs to be worked on as well? Nicole, thank you.
I can also provide a brief update. Part of some of the work we're working on with DPZ will be some recommendations on future use of the Plaza and the cottages. And so there may be recommendations that come later on for the interior. But Nicole will give you an update on the hurricane repair work that we did complete.
Yes. So the Lyles Hotel interior, as you know, was, we pretty much had to get the building for renovations, and most of those are complete. The few little hiccups we have is an elevator. So we are kind of still working through the elevator portion, but we are close to being finished on the interior. The exterior that we're requesting today, it's some stucco work mainly, and water's getting behind that. So we do need to try to get that going, going into this hurricane season. So the work will be starting ASAP.
Great. Thank you.
Question on that. With the elevator, is it the same situation like all these condos are having? Just lack of ability to get somebody in there? Or is it something specific to the building that is creating the...
It was the same as all the condos. It's just so many were ruined that they had to order and then setting it in. We're going through the inspection process and things like that. So it shouldn't be long, because it is in at this point. It's just making sure that we have, you know, crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is at this point. Yep. And I went by last night. The fountain's working great. Yes, the fountain is working. Yep.
Chris, did you have any comments on the consent agenda?
No, I didn't. Thanks, Mike.
Anybody else? All right. Moving on to city attorney items.
I have two items. Actually, the second item, the SOMAX-related one, I'm going to pull. We were hoping to get a finalized copy of the settlement agreement for the agenda, but it still hasn't come through. So we'll bring that back at another date. The first item is a follow-up, just similar to the action you took at the last council meeting. This is another piece of property, the acquisition cost being covered by BG Mine Settlement for Nicole Equestrian. This, I realize that this will look a little different than most of the agreements we've had in the past. Rather than a separate settlement agreement, we've done a joint stipulated final judgment. So essentially, we're signing off on a order that we're going to enter into the court on behalf of both the plaintiff and the defendant that says these are the amounts to be paid, these are where those payments are going to go. But it is no different than any of the other settlements we've received beforehand.
All right. Laura, you had a question?
I do. Who pays for the legal fees?
The legal fees, everything related to this, including the fees for our outside counsel, are paid for by BG Mine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Mayor Gibson.
Questions? Chris, are you good with everything?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
All right. And so no B? You're good?
I'm good.
All right. City manager.
Thank you. At this time, our finance director is going to come forward for our presentation on our March financial report and updates regarding the budget process as well. Do we have the control up here?
You can use the arrows, arrow buttons.
Okay. Okay, great. Perfect. Good morning. We are going to discuss again and review our proposed budget calendar that we reviewed at our last city council meeting. We just wanted to present that to everyone one final time. And if we receive direction today, it will be your official budget calendar as we move forward from now till September 17th. We'll quickly review those dates for you all one more time. Wednesday, June 18th, at 4:00 p.m., will be our initial budget workshop. That will be where you receive your preliminary budget presentation. And then we're proposing to move, that's a regular city council meeting day, but we're proposing to move the 9:00 a.m. meeting to a 5:30 meeting to allow us to hold the budget workshop at 4:00 p.m. and then hold the city council meeting at 5:30. And then the next meeting date would be July 16th. That's a Wednesday. That's a regular city council meeting. By Florida law, we will be required to take our first of three millage rate votes. And then also, our stormwater utility vote will be at that meeting. Then the following city council meetings, we will have budget updates as needed. As we'll talk, and we see each year, we start our, by Florida statutes, we start our budget process earlier. And then as we move through, we receive updated economic data from the state. The state budget estimates come in and change as we move through our process, and we incorporate those into our budget each meeting that we have, and we update you all as that new information becomes available. And then September, Wednesday, September 3rd, at 5:30, we will have our tentative budget hearing. Our two September meetings, by Florida statutes, both have to occur at 5:01 or after. We select 5:30. That gives everyone time to hopefully attend the meeting for us. And then we'll have our, that'll have, excuse me, that tentative budget hearing will have our second of three mill rate votes, again, by Florida statute. And then Wednesday, September 17th, at 5:30, we'll have our final budget hearing, and that will be by Florida law, our final mill rate vote and to approve our budget. So hopefully, those dates are good with everyone, and we'll populate those, and we'll move forward with our budget. Our general fund revenue as of March 31st, 2025, we're six months into the year for this data that we're presenting to you all. And this is our pie chart. This is just our regular recurring revenue that we have. You can see the consistency there. And that does change significantly as we move forward, because ad valorem taxes we collect in November, December primarily. And then the other revenue streams that we have, we do those monthly or quarterly. So this pie does change significantly as we move forward through the year. General fund revenue, this is one of my favorite slides. Today, it shows six months fiscal year-to-date, current year, as compared to the initial, excuse me, to the immediate prior year. We did want, I did want to call to your attention that we are six months in and we're seeing some dampening of some of our revenue streams. We've highlighted, and again, not anticipated, we follow, you know, the state economists, they do a great job with this. So it has been incorporated into your budget numbers that you see, but we do watch what we collected last year, year-to-date, as compared to this year-to-date, because it helps us identify some trends and confirm some of the things we thought may be happening. Half-cent sales tax, that is down about 7%. Some of the other items are down. Interest up. So overall, you know, we're, you know, we should be fine from our budgetary standpoint. We do watch those, and those trends will be incorporated into your budget projections that we show to you next month. General fund expenditures, these are current fiscal year-to-date as compared to prior fiscal year-to-date. We're seeing minor increases in some of them, but pretty much consistent, again, with budgetary estimates that we've made. Restricted revenues, these are our revenues that are assessed for specific uses. Downtown revenue sharing, y'all hear me talk about that all the time. That was our partnership with Lee County. That is fully funded. We will continue, the city will continue to put the real estate tax growth money from the downtown into that until it's met its debt service payments, which should happen, you know, in the next few years. So building fees, surprisingly, they're a little higher than last year. That's a good thing. Impact fees as well, stormwater, some of the other things. So some of, some positive news there. Cash balances, we'd like to show you all current cash balances, as well as the two immediately preceding years. These are monies that we're accumulating and designating through our budget process for capital improvements. So when you see these dollars go up, that means we're accumulating some money. And when the projects are actually being constructed, we will be spending that money. So that's just a regular operational flow for our capital improvement projects. And the second slide is just a continuation of that, the different restricted types of revenue sources, with the last data series there being funds reserves for debt service. And that does include the 2 million that we have for operational disaster monies that we receive from the state. It is sitting in the bank if we should need it. And that's it. Lisa, will you just go back to the revenue where you were showing the dampening? And can you go through ad valorem and explain the lag time of that ad valorem collected? So that... Yes. Yes. Governments tend to, we tend to, when you hear, real estate taxes are based on January 1st the year before. So we will receive our initial estimate for our next year of ad valorem taxes as of June 1st, we'll get the data. But it will be for January 1st. So if there is a dampening of real estate taxes, we usually lag, excuse me, real estate values, which equate to the real estate taxes, that lags. So we will be, we will probably, I don't know what we're going to see with the estimate this year. We'll know June 1st for sure. But it won't be reflective of current values that we've seen, sale prices. It will be the ones that were in effect January 2025. Is that, yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just a confirmation that everyone's familiar, comfortable with the budget calendar as set.
Nigel?
My question, or am I comfortable with the...
Well, I see you have a question.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure, Mr. Mayor. Lisa, just for the record, the majority of our funds are invested in treasuries, bonds, low risk.
It's, yes. It's invested per Florida statutes, which is a very conservative way to invest your capital that you're going to, going to need to fund your projects. Yes, sir.
So bad news for everything else, but as far as our investments with treasuries going up, we don't anticipate that number going down.
Well, yeah, we're going to watch that. We're going to kind of follow the state's lead a little bit. We, we're usually with budgetary, especially for interest, we don't necessarily budget we're going to get the exact same amount, but we do believe it's going to go up. And by, by virtue of the fact that we are accumulating two things, we're accumulating money as we're waiting for a timing for, to spend that money for our capital improvements. So that means our balances are high, higher this next year. And we do anticipate that the rates are going to stay a little higher. They'll probably won't budget for exactly height, but yes, it will help us. It is helping us. It's a wonderful thing.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay.
Any other questions? Everybody good with the schedule?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have the presentation by community development for activity for April.
your capital that you're gonna, gonna need to fund your projects. Yes, sir.
So bad news for everything else, but as far as our investments with treasuries going up, we don't anticipate that number going down?
Well, yeah, we're gonna watch that, we're gonna kind of follow the state's lead a little bit. We, we're usually with budgetary, especially for interest, we don't necessarily budget we're gonna get the exact same amount, but we do believe it's gonna go up. And by virtue of the fact that we are accumulating two things, we're accumulating money as we're waiting for a timing for, to spend that money for our capital improvement, so that means our balances are high, higher this next year, and we do anticipate that the rates are gonna stay a little higher. They'll probably won't budget for exactly height, but yes, it will help us, it is helping us. It's a wonderful thing.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay.
Any other questions? Everybody good with the schedule?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have the presentation by community development for activity for April.
Good morning.
Morning, John.
Morning, John.
So as we have exited the height of our season, our permit activity has generally stayed level. Our lobby activity started to drop off, and our inspection activity has stayed about the same. So last Monday, after, when we had all that rain, was probably our lowest inspection day that I've seen in probably over a year. I think we were down about 130 inspections that day. Usually, we've been averaging somewhere 180 to 220-ish, so we've been keeping the guys out in the field busy, and buying a lot of Gatorade to keep them hydrated. Phone calls have stayed about the same, a lot of contact is still there. A lot of what I've seen in our conference room has been individuals coming in to finish up what's left over from hurricane repairs, and discussing 50% rules and what they can build, because they finally got their check from their insurance company. So we're at the very tail end of that activity, we're kind of going back, transitioning into new development, and we've got a handful of newer multifamily developments that are under construction today. We also have a couple more that are in zoning or in permitting. You will also have a relatively busy zoning calendar this summer, so people are still moving forward with projects, which is always a very good sign. And these numbers kind of speak for themselves in terms of what's going on in our department and how we're handling things. We really haven't seen that drop off yet for summer, more than we, only really in the lobby activity, but I expect there to be a little bit of a dip as we go into June and July. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments?
Questions?
But we've been trying to keep ourselves busy, so see you Friday. Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And then I just have a minor update. I did speak to Lee County DOT. If you do see, there is some equipment going on at the crosswalk at Hickory Boulevard, Beach Access 1. This is just some preliminary restaking, they will be coming back later on with flex stakes, as well as there's more ADA upgrades that are to be going on at that intersection. But there is some preliminary work that has started as of this week. And the other item I have is, we did receive on Monday a request from Trust from Public Lands to see the city, the interest of the city to apply for Safe Streets for All for acquisition funding. It does require a 20% match, which would be approximately $5 million from the city to pledge that match to the grant application, but I do understand it also does require that it be accepted into the Lee MPO plan, which is happening a little bit later this month, I believe, beginning of June. And so there is a request that should that, should the project be added to that, would the city be interested in applying for those acquisition funds and pledging the match?
The pledge would come out of what we've already kind of committed.
Correct.
Not additional.
No, it would be, and we would have to bring back anything further back to you as well, should you wish to, should enter into a grant agreement as well. The grant is due January 26th, and the request was also made to the village of Astero and Collier County.
Would only one entity be putting in for it, or?
I think the recommendation was that all entities put in.
Laurie, you had a question?
I did. Actually, at the MPO FDOT meeting, Matt Maurer made a presentation on this, and he said there are funds available, and the key is under $10 million, and if you can do a joint project with another municipality, or across county lines, so something with Naples, or something with Astero, you have a better chance in acquiring it. So it's just something to think about.
I think at this point, since the application is due January 26th, we have more time to come back to council. If you'd like staff to work on this, I think in speaking with Ellie as well, there is quite a bit of technical information that's beyond grant writing skills, so we may need to work with a consultant on some of that information, or tap on MPO for that as well.
We need to get as much money as we can for the project, so.
Do we need a motion, or just direction?
Jim, you had?
Yeah, I have a question. Laura, can you clarify, if we, Astero and Lee County put in, is that cap for collective three, $10 million, or is that $10 million for each municipality?
Total $10 million, and we pay 20%, so we would split it with Astero. So the match fee is that.
And it could be higher than $10 million, but he said it was more likely to get it if it was $10 million or less.
I think if there's general direction for us to put more information together and work on that, and determine whether we need some consulting assistance, or whether the MPO would take the lead on that consulting, we can come back with further information. But the request just came in.
And they also showed that Benita had a project that would apply for the same Safe Streets for All, and I believe it was the Pennsylvania corridor.
Correct.
But probably not good to go for multiple things, so. Laura?
Is there any complications with this grant? You know how sometimes when it's federal, there are strings attached and conditions attached, or is this just?
They're just gonna hand you the money.
Who knows?
Most federal grants have restrictions and rules, just like the CDBGDR, where there's certain reports that are required, certain environmental assessments, so I'm sure.
They're not onerous, are they? They're not?
Most federal grants aren't onerous. We don't know. We have until January, so, you know, give us time, as Arlene mentioned, I know Ellie was, I'm sorry, June.
June 26th.
So we have no time.
Yep.
But we probably do need some assistance. Ellie was concerned about that, either through the Lee County MPO, or outside within an expense to us, so we'll find out more.
Thank you. Chris, did you have any questions?
No, I, no, I don't. I think we need to go ahead, and as you said, Mike, pursue all avenues we can with respect to getting the money for the land acquisition.
Any other questions? Do you need a motion?
No, I think at this point, it's just recommendation, any formal application, we'll bring back to you, but we wanted to make sure that was the direction before staff initiated time on it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That concludes my report.
All right. Mayor and councilmember reports. Chris, would you like to go first?
I really don't have anything at this point, Mike.
Okay. Then Jesse?
No, I'd just like to congratulate staff and all of us up here on the quickest meeting I think we've ever had, ever.
It's not over yet.
True, 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 true. That's all I've got.
Who did you jinx that?
No, I'm like, I should've waited, I should've went last, maybe.
Laurie?
Just a couple of things. At the FDOT presentation on Friday, they talked about AAM, which is Advanced Air Mobile, and it's sort of like, I am gonna be flying in a Jetson taxi, and they have all these proposed routes, and it's kind of cool, it's a helicopter, it's manned, it's piloted, I should say. And they are doing trial runs in Tampa, so it could be very exciting. There will be needed infrastructure on certain places and new places, but it's a super huge helicopter that lifts vertically and then takes off. It's just like the Jetsons, you know? It's cool. I don't know, I thought it was cool. And then I attended the memorial for our fallen officers, yes, on last Wednesday, I think, and it was touching, as always, and well-attended, and Carmen did a great job, and the little kids, they just keep growing, so it's wonderful, and they're smiling. So that's all I have.
Thank you. So we need to start working on the heliport on the roof?
Yes.
Nigel?
For just a minute, I looked at you, and you're not serious.
I am.
Two things real quickly. First of all, all my fellow councilmembers, at the TDC meeting last week, obviously there's some concerns as to what's gonna happen with the individual TDCs, but from what I'm understanding, that in Tallahassee, that that's not going to happen, that we'll retain our local TDCs. But when I looked at the number of grants that we approved, I think there were 32, nothing from Benita, and I talked to Arlene, that we're gonna look and see what possibly we can do from the city, but for your constituents, some of the groups that we have, there's money there available for them. I know last year, the Wonder Gardens and Arts Benita both received funds, but I think there's other organizations that, you know, if it benefits tourism in any way, shape, or form, or the committee, we should look at it, or we should encourage our constituents to look at that money, it's there. And it's our money, so let's see if we can get some of it down here to Benita. Memorial Day, last call, as they say, but it's gonna be a warm day, unfortunately, and I'm gonna ask our Parks and Rec Director for 38 fans, or 40 fans, the sheriff wants to, two, well, maybe.
She goes, how about two?
Don't they have air conditioners they can plug in?
It is going to be warm. Talked to Admiral Murray, he's looking forward to it, and the Marine Corps League of Naples is sending up, I think everybody's probably seen it, where they do dual taps, you have two buglers, so they're gonna do that for us. And should be a beautiful day, 9:00 AM sharp, Riverside Park, we're usually done by 10:05, and I know some of the local merchants are doing specials for veterans and their families, so encourage people to stay downtown after the ceremony. That's it.
Thank you.
Two things. First, I'd like to go ahead, in addition to our city's Memorial Day ceremonies, is advise folks that the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution are holding a memorial ceremony this coming Saturday at 9:30 at the Benita Springs Cemetery, located at Imperial and Benita Beach Road. So this is one of those forgotten areas of fallen heroes and so forth. If you can make it, I would encourage your attendance there at 9:30 this Saturday. Second item, I've expressed my wonderful concerns regarding the city's costs, responsibilities, liabilities, and risks of each of the phases of the Rails to Trails project. Following last week's meeting, I did go ahead and send a series of questions that I had to both Deb Ward, and just prior to receiving the business plan from Chris Corey. I do wanna thank both Councilman Corey, as well as Deb Ward, for their responses on the various aspects of the Rails to Trails project. I think that the information is critical to start assembling as we go into the budget process, and evaluate our priorities as we move forward. So again, a special thank you to Chris, thank you very much, and also thank you to Deb Ward. I think at next meeting, I would like to go ahead and have a discussion how we have either a workshop or formal presentation from TPL, or BERC, or whatever, to talk the various components and the possible risks, responsibilities, and liabilities that the city would have, so that we can include that and consider that, assuming a success next March with the purchase of the Rails Trails. So that's it.
Laurie?
I just wanted to add, Christopher Campbell and Ellie Soto McGwin did a fabulous job on the flood plan management for Benita Springs. It's very thorough, and it'll save, if, I get questions like this all the time, and I'll call John, or I'll call Matt, this saves phone calls to staff. It's so good.
Thank you. All right. I don't have much. I do wanna get with Tony about the number of food vendors that, or unauthorized food vendors that have been popping up all over, especially Old 41, some on Benita Beach Road. I know the sheriff department said it's not really their responsibility, they do talk to them and try to discourage it, but it's more on us to take care of it, so what, you know, we need to figure something out better to kind of mitigate this problem.
Where's it at?
They're popping up all over, like on the Wonder Garden, not the Wonder Gardens, but the bamboo properties.
Across the street from, I saw them.
Yeah, you know, they're two, three vehicles setting up, selling, you know, just various food items, but, you know, they're not registered with anybody, they're not a food truck, it's just somebody basically selling stuff out of their house, you know, they bring it there in the car, and they drop people off with coolers and just sell stuff that they've been in the park before. It's kind of like whack-a-mole, you catch them somewhere, and then they just move somewhere else, so. You know, it's just something we need to kind of pay more attention to and try to solve. But that's all I have, so public comment. Ben?
Ben Harrison, San Avonley Drive. Good morning, folks. I noticed part of the budget process has, one of the items that will be discussed would be the stormwater utility fee. It was six years ago, just about, when the city council had a long debate on that particular issue, and I was involved behind the scenes a little bit, and if there ever was an issue that the city residents supported, it was that fee being established, because again, of the serious flooding we all had experienced during 2017 in Irma. Even as a fiscal conservative then, and still am a fiscal conservative, I'm seriously hoping that the council will give consideration to increasing that fee. There's a lot more that has to be done, a lot has been done compared to where we were, you know, five, six, seven years ago. We made a lot of improvements, especially in the area of the city that I reside in, and I know there are other areas that also could use some updates. And, you know, it gets difficult when you have a government that sponsors or supports quote "government light." Well, even when there's government light, you gotta have this realized, and I do this with my own community, it gets difficult sometimes, but I say to my members, the HOA, that, you know, it's like, it's running a business, and a lot of people don't like that. Well, it is a business. I mean, you have revenue, and you have the source primarily, primary source, so I hope that the members of the council, when you go through your debates and discussions, that you give seriously consideration to increasing that fee. I remember that vote, I remember working with some people behind the scenes, and I remember that vote was, I think, four to three. I'd like to see at this time be 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Or adjourned?
Wow.
Forty minutes.